Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 13th Planning and Zoning Commission. Aislinn, will you please call roll and please state if you have any conflicts of interest?
Here and I visited the applicant's site.
Any conflicts? Do you have anything else to report?
No.
Crystal Chanda?
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Roger Fry?
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Adam Geyer?
Here, nothing to disclose.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Richard Phillips?
Here with nothing to disclose.
And Whitney Fenwick is excused.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the approval of minutes. The commission may wish to waive the oral reading of the Planning and Zoning clarification and meeting minutes from August 9th, 2023, and approve the minutes as written. Is there any discussion or questions on the minutes? With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from August 9th, 2023, as presented.
One second.
I have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Fry. Will you call vote, please?
Hewlett?
Yes.
Fry? Yes.
R2?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Geyer?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, we will now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the P&amp;Z elections. We're going to choose a chair and a vice chair. What we will do is make nominations and hopefully come to agreement on one and then go ahead and vote on both at the same time.
Can I make a motion? And you can correct me if I'm not allowed to do this, but can we move Agenda Item Number Three and switch places with Agenda Item Number Four so that Chris doesn't need to sit through our elections?
This is going to take two minutes.
Okay.
I mean, are you, will you entertain a motion?
No, but a nomination.
A nomination. I nominate Crystal Chanda for Chair and Whitney Fenwick for Vice Chair. Or do I have to make two separate motions?
Nope, that's fine.
That's good.
I would just like to say that we have the right to decline. I have no problem staying Chair. Whitney was on board to be Vice Chair. Any other nominations or discussion?
Second.
With that, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that we vote, that we elect Crystal Chanda as Chair of Planning and Zoning and Whitney Fenwick as Vice Chair of Planning and Zoning.
Second.
We have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Phillips?
Yes.
Hewlett?
Yes.
R2?
Yes.
Chanda? Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Geyer? Yes.
There you go. It wasn't two minutes. One, maybe?
Thank you for that, though.
Rich, we'd already talked about it before in the Agenda clarification. We had it all under control.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Four is a public hearing for preliminary plat, File 23-1926. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Gary Clark, represented by Chris Adams of Creek Hollow and Associates, LLC, for a subdivision to be known as Oakwood Subdivision. The proposal calls for the plating of 2.483 acres, more or less, into five lots. The subject property is zoned commercial general and consists of five general office buildings with parking. The property owner is subdividing the property to include a building with a minimum amount of off-street parking. No changes to existing structure are proposed. I would like to explain the procedures for a public hearing quickly. I know we're all familiar with them. The application has a presentation, is, application presentation is limited to 10 minutes. There is a three-minute limit on public testimony. Those presenting or testifying shall state their name for the record. While giving testimony, questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and should be addressed only to the commission. During the public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than 8:00 PM, the commission may take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented during the public hearing. Protocol requires that the commission members and audience be recognized by the prior chair before speaking. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing open and I would invite the applicant to come to the podium.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Chris Adams, Creek Hollow and Associates, Incorporated, not LLC. Not that that matters to me, but anyways, I am here to represent Gary Clark. He's the owner of the application and the property that's before you tonight. And just to give you an idea, if you're not familiar, it's the Oakwood Plaza, just south of Pearl Street, the Big Dog.
Satellite.
Satellite Street, yep, thank you. I think it used to be a 7-Eleven. I don't remember.
I think it did.
Long time ago.
Maybe Circle K.
Circle K, there you go, yep. Okay, anyways, so this property's been there, I think it was originally developed back in the 80s by Gary Brown. If you remember or know Gary Brown, he was a developer slash realtor for, in town. That shows some of my age. Anyways, so it's been around for a while and I'm not sure exactly when Gary acquired and took over the property, but he's been managing these buildings for quite a while and they're existing buildings. And in your packet, at the very back, there's a parcel map. I'll just maybe just show you, so.
Is that the, that's a picture?
Yep, that map there. The parcel lines that you see here are the original parcel lines and it's actually six parcels total and.
Goes through the middle of those buildings.
And yeah, the one goes through the middle, well, two of them there. And anyways, Gary came to me and he, he's wanting to just be able to have the option to sell those individual buildings off individually, if you'd like. I think he's the owner of all of them. He's leasing them and, but there's some interest in, from either tenants or other people to be able to purchase each individual building. So that's what's kind of spurred this process. So I went in and we surveyed the site, outlined all the parking stalls, as you can see on the map, found the utilities and such, so that we could make a determination of how to split this up and allocate parking spaces to each, each building. And so that in the division process, that each building would comply with the necessary parking spaces.
That was my question.
Based on square footage of the building. So that's why the building on the map shows the square footage and the spaces that are required and then you can count them up kind of, and I, I don't know if the map's clear enough. I brought a different map.
It was a big one.
With little darker lines for the, yeah, that might be helpful. But anyways, so that being said, nothing's changing. There's no intent to change anything other than just subdivide and divide things up. He plans, and he is working with Racine Olson, to work to get, put together a access and, access and utility easement agreement.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to figure out. And in an association to run and regulate the maintenance of the parking lot, so they'll all be part of an association, that the maintenance will be taken care of, the grounds, the mowing, and, and then to that point, there was one of the conditions, thanks, one of the conditions that was mentioned by staff on, under the Public Works part of your packet on Page One, there's some development conditions. I want to just go through those real quick, maybe to clarify and then ask for some clarification from staff on a couple of items, just so we know kind of where we're headed there. So on, under development conditions, Item One, that there looks like some sidewalk that needs to be brought up or fixed and repaired. I visited with Gary about that and he seemed amenable to that. He did have some questions about the changes of ADA requirements on the Pershing Avenue approach. It's, so I will ask maybe staff or Merrill, City Engineer, to clarify with us on that, what he's thinking and why it's different than maybe what's out front on Yellowstone. Okay? Get him thinking about that.
I'll keep track, so when he comes up, we can.
And then the stormwater system, A-OK on that. We're gonna, I'll investigate that a little further. On the map, I show the storm inlets. I need to pull those grates and see what I can find, see if they're interconnecting or if they're just independent or exactly what. So I will most definitely provide that map and, and Item Four, I will work with Merrill on that as well. And then to my previous comment, the documentation of a cross-access and parking easement. So as I said, the client or applicant is working with Racine Olson to generate that agreement so that all the business owners, the buildings would have the cross-access easements that they need, as well as the maintenance requirements of the grounds and that, the snowplow removal, those sort of things. Okay, and then Six and Seven are kind of combined in my mind, or kind of, we'll talk about them together. Again, a little bit of clarification, on the map, on the north side of the map, here at the top, I have a labeled dumpster.
Yep.
So that is the central dumpster site for all of those buildings. That's what they've been using and utilizing. So we were under the, and Gary is under the impression or feeling that that would be able to continue to be used as the central dumpster location for all the buildings and it would be covered.
Under the HOA?
As, under the association, as far as paying the billing part of it, to have it removed on a weekly basis.
Okay.
So we can get some clarification there. Whether, whether it's ample size or not, maybe it's not, but if we could, if it needs to be increased, probably a doable thing, but we'd like, I think you'd like to keep the dumpster site in that location rather than dumpster carts at each building. So some clarification and maybe further direction on that. Outside of that, I don't have anything else unless you have some questions for me about what you see in front of you.
Commission, questions? I have a couple of questions. So one of my questions was about the garbage containers or dumpster and if, if the owner was good with that, I think it might be just bringing it up to city standards. It's commercial, so it has to have gates to close it and maybe more. I do also, I had a lot of concerns about the water lines and the sewer lines because they do cross property lines once this is subdivided. So I'm sure the city requested this, so it formed a loop between Pershing and Yellowstone, but those only feed lots two and five and so between three and four, are they going to be stuck if something happens? So, and I think maybe it's something we should make as a condition in here, that that documentation for the easements also includes the utilities in that. Just, just one of my thoughts to make sure it was, it was covered and it doesn't happen when something breaks and then somebody doesn't want to cover it.
Sure.
I noticed that the storm inlet on the northeast, southeast side of Lot Four goes into the adjacent neighbor, or is that just a random line in there?
That I need to investigate. I think it does, because there is a inlet on that south property, because Gary does own that property as well.
Okay, so that, it flows into this property, not flows out?
Yeah, I think it drained, the parking lot is the only inlet on that parking lot. So the drainage goes to that little corner, the end of that line, and then will drain into that other storm inlet that seems to be the holding.
Okay.
That's why I think they're independent.
So from the other property it drains, from this other property into?
From the south to the north.
Okay.
Into what would be Lot Four.
Okay. If they're draining into this one, I'm not going to worry about it. If you're draining out, I would.
Yeah, and it's, so he has talked a little bit about, we, I talked to him about incorporating that piece as well in this plat, but he opted to just go with these parcels here. He may include them in the agreement and the association, just merely because they do have cross-access. You can see there that there is some access there.
Right, that would make sense, yep.
That he would probably need to grant them that easement or cross-access separately so that he didn't have to block that off or void that connection.
I have a question.
And my last question for you, that structure right close to that storm inlet, if I look on Google Earth, it looks like that structure is something that maybe the adjacent lot is using. It encroaches either way.
Yes.
I don't know if that would be easier to take care of right now.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something that could be in the easements or something like that, but I think it should be addressed.
Yeah, I, I will make a note. I'll ask him, it's a shed.
Right.
And I don't know who uses that shed, whether it's Lot, the building on Lot Four uses it, or if it's the south parcel that uses it. I, I'll have to clarify with Gary. Maybe it's his and that's where he stores things, but.
It'd be easier for him to take, take care of it now instead of when he sells one.
Find out. Yeah, yep, and I'll, I'll ask him and quiz him of that, what the, what the shed use is and, and yeah, it is slightly over the line.
Okay. Did you have another question?
I did have a question and it was about the stormwater. On this map here, it says that the stormwater retention is provided by these. Is that the case? Do these, these storm inlets, are they going to, French drains underneath or where are they going? Because there's no swale, which is what it is other places in town.
Yeah, so this is, this is something that was done back when Gary.
Sure.
Developed it. So the best that I can tell at this point, I haven't pulled the lids or the grates.
Crawled in there?
I haven't looked in there. I think when I did the survey, it was late fall, almost a year ago. I mean, it's been a while since, we've been working on this for a bit. So those inlets, I would need to pull them and I think that's why Public Works asked for the map.
It does ask for the map, but this, this says that it's provided by existing storm.
Yep.
But that doesn't seem to align with just where this goes.
So the O and M manual will make him address all of that.
Okay.
Yep, and all that stormwater right now for that parking lot is going to those.
Those three?
Yeah, so the best assumption I can make right now is they're probably a dry well type thing because they don't appear to be going anywhere else.
Okay.
And probably in the 80s when Gary developed it, it was A-OK to.
Probably still A-OK if it works.
Do we need to put something in here about the shed?
Um, I would say where this is preliminary, the city can take it without adding it, but if it's, I mean, but if you want to, we can, yeah. Any other questions from commission?
I'm good.
Nope, okay. Thank you very much. We might have more. Now we will hear from the staff.
Good evening, mound chair, commission members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Really don't have anything else to add as far as the planning end of it. I think everybody understands what was before you. So unless you have questions, me, I'll have Merrill come up and answer any questions you may have on it, so.
He can answer the dumpster questions?
What's that?
He can answer the dumpster questions. You're not our dumpster guy. Okay, it's Merrill.
Commission, do you have any questions for Matt?
No, I do not.
Merrill, we have all the questions for you.
So many dumpster questions.
So do you want to test short-term or long-term memory?
I'm going to let Margiana start with.
Because I could just go through, through the things and then if you have questions at the end, we can answer that too.
Go for it, just pop.
Okay, so first, the number one, as we talked about, the development conditions, is that 10-foot of sidewalk between the north property line and coming south onto this property. The south property that we're questioning right now has an abrupt edge and stuff, so we try to get some of this stuff cleaned up when we're doing plating and that as we can versus trying to send out code enforcements later after we've found out where, where things are at. So I'm glad to hear he's looked at that. The number two is the Pershing access and the difference between the state and the, there's, there's not a whole lot of difference. It's just I, we're trying to get the ADAs cleaned up as best as we can and where, that's a state route. It's, the sidewalk, as you're looking at it, the cross-slope isn't as great as it is on Pershing. And the, the pro-wag requirements and that, it comes out, is that it's a 2% cross-slope. So we figured with some of the sidewalk and some of the other issues that we're going to have in there with concrete and that, maybe this would be the time along there on Pershing to, to address that, look at that and see if we could get the cross-slope down, the wings of the approach, back to the 1 and 12 and meeting those conditions. So we can investigate that further with the, with the applicant and meet on-site and discuss that further if we need to between now and going to final plat application. And then as far as the mapping of the, the private stormwater, that is correct, we need, we're trying to get all the private stuff, where things are and the existing systems when we can in these type of situations. And then also get a, the agreements put together and all that, that says they'll continue to maintain their system and the contact numbers that we need for that purpose. So, and doing that and, and glad to hear the, the chair and that, we, we figured that they were already working with the utilities, but we wanted to make sure access and stuff was all taken care of. So we're, the applicant representative has given us the, the indication that that's what's happening with a local attorney firm, law firm here in town. So we'll, we'll be able to get all that information when it comes in for the final plat application also and make sure that we've gotten, take care of that. So now as we get to the number Six and Seven, we've been finding that as we move forward on these and, and we didn't have any other indications other than, oh, looks like they're going to sell all this stuff off individually and that and what their ten is. So doing that, we try to keep those individually done. Now, in lieu of that, if we can show during the final plat application that, that the dumpster pad is, is big enough, I'm sure it's still big enough. We've gone to the front loads. It's positioned in a way that still has the 60 to 90 feet clear zone for the trucks to get into there. We can go from a three-yard to a six-yard dumpster with the same size of pads. So we can double the size of that and indicate how many dumps they've had between now and then for the final plat application and to see if we need to go to a double dumpster or not, pad and maybe expand that out a little if we need to. So we can work through that. The accounts there, as long as we know that, that we've got a tight property association through the attorney, law firm and, and there so that we can have the same accounting as far as sewer, water and sewer billing, we can go ahead and keep that the way it is and make sure it's under the one billing and, and not billing separately. And the other part to that is, is on the plat when it comes into final, and I will talk to the applicant's representative, there's a new note that we've been putting on the plat and it's in the owner's certificate, that basically it's the liability waivers for the garbage trucks and that to go in because those trucks do get heavy and that their parking lots, their asphalt and so forth is in such a state and meets a standard that will carry those, those weights of the garbage trucks. Plus, in doing that, it also, for fire trucks, is the 70,000 to 80,000 pound vehicles in all-weather conditions. So we do have that liability that's put in there. What this does is so that every time somebody changes hands, we don't have to go knock on their door and say, oh, by the way, you've got to sign this document and sign the waiver anyway. So we're trying to catch it all up front, all in one nice package.
So is that part of the city standards in accordance with city standards? Is that?
Yes.
So if we change those conditions to say that the garbage service will be handled by a property association but meet other city standards?
I would also, I'd just put in there, you could put number eight or whatever, that yeah, as long as either these conditions are met or an approved city.
In lieu of Six and Seven?
Yeah, in lieu of Six and Seven, you know, they could go ahead and follow city standards per a property owner's association under one billing or something like that.
Okay.
Or do you want me to add in anything else? Or did I, did I miss a question?
I have a question, but I don't want to skip topic.
No, I'm trying to write down what you just said.
Do you have any other questions?
I think that's, that does it. That gets us there.
In lieu of Six and Seven, applicant could follow city standards. What was the second part of what you said?
I'd just say follow the city standards.
For?
For a property association for one billing.
Okay.
Address and liability waiver on the plat.
Okay. And building and, building liability? What did you say?
No, just liability.
And liability, okay.
Liability waiver on the plat.
On the plat, liability waiver, there we go. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
That's all I had.
No other questions? Do you have any questions? Any questions, you guys? I just had one question and I think it's just boiler page, boilerplate verbiage, but it was saying that you guys were going to require, not a traffic impact study, but a traffic analysis? And I don't even think that is needed. We're not, I mean, we're not changing.
Where's that?
Anything. It's in the staff review.
In the staff report under mat stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's needed, it's not going to change.
There's nothing required.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was documented and.
Yeah, from Public Works, there's nothing that's going to be required and it is the same and still under the 100 peak hours.
I do have another thing. I have another thing. Do we need to add a condition about the stormwater system if it's making sure that it's retained on-site? What if it's not?
It's in there, it's already in there.
It's already noted on the plat that it's retention. Besides, I get a little nervous, just so people realize and for the public and a little bit of training for that question, is that, you know, the city ordinances, we try to say, you know, you retain on-site if we can and that, and more appropriate word is to mitigate it from going to your neighbors and that because I can guarantee you, if Noah was here today, you could not retain all your water on-site.
Okay.
And so it just depends on what storm we're blessed with.
What storm, got it.
We're blessed with. It's a positive day.
Any other questions for Merrill? No? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, this must, it's probably going to be the hardest part. I have to open it to public testimony. Anybody providing support? Anyone uncommitted? Anyone opposed? Would you like to rebuttal any of those?
I have a question for him.
Okay.
Do I need to state my name again? Okay. Chris Adams, Creek Hollow.
Okay. Are you okay with adding a conditional, an addition eight that says that in lieu of Condition Six and Seven, applicant could follow city standards for a property association for one. for one billing address, including liability waiver on the plat?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's probably a reasonable condition or request. I think Gary intends that, to make it as simple as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, and so if we can, if we have to fix the ADA ramps on Pershing, as simple as possible, come up with the simplest solution.
In the sidewalk.
We can do that. The dumpster, if we can get it on one location and if we need to increase the size or look at the counts and if the size fits, add a gate, just work with staff and figure out how to make it one site.
Rather than everybody having their own dumpster, garbage can, okay.
Yeah, so
That they have to pull to the street.
Yeah.
That they have to pull to the street.
Yeah, yeah, or he, he was, he's like, well, I don't see how, you know, now we're going to have a garbage junk drive around and pick up their, their things at every, front of every business and so he
There's a way around that.
I think with the discussion we've had tonight, Merrill's a little bit more clear to the dumpster pad, if we can
I think this is supposed to be in your favor, kind of, so.
Absolutely, so that's why.
Okay.
I think it will work to our favor. I like working with Merrill, so we're good.
Don't tell him.
Don't tell, don't tell.
Don't tell him that, it goes to his head.
It's out on record.
Any other questions for the applicant?
On development condition five, are you okay with us adding utility easements to the, the provide documentation of cross-access, comma, parking easements, comma, and utility easements?
Yes, I think it's an absolute, so the sewer, the sewer main that crosses the sewer there on the southerly portion, it's already under an easement that's of record.
Okay.
But I've noticed that north, the north portion, it doesn't, I couldn't find a record of an easement. So I've provided easement across there.
Oh, I see that now after I said that.
So we don't need that condition?
We do because the water doesn't.
The water doesn't. And so, yeah, whether we provide an actual easement, defined line or it's just a blanket.
I think a blanket.
Kind of a blanket.
And then you could do water, sewer and storm all in that same blanket.
Storm is probably going to be up to the, I would think up to the owner to maintain their stormwater system.
Unless one parking lot drains to another parking lot.
But, yeah, right. Point taken because they are dividing it, so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify before
But that's, I think that's what Gary's intent with working with Racine. And I appreciate the feedback, so I'm going to share with some of these. So as he's working with, I think it's TJ Budge, they're trying to put that document together so I can share some of these things that they can incorporate in that document.
I haven't fixed the shed thing.
It'll be there, in their best interest to do it now.
Might be movable, he can just, you know, nudge it a foot or two and take care of the encroachment if it needs to stay. I don't know who uses it.
Okay.
Anything else?
And commission, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much, Chris. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. how would we wish to proceed?
I would like to make a motion. Are you, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve the preliminary plat application from Gary Clark of Lone One LLC Incorporated for the Oakwood subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards of approval for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report with the following changes. That condition number three, no, condition number five, that the applicant will provide documentation of cross-access, comma, parking easement, comma, and utility easements. And the addition of a
Can you talk a little slower?
Sorry, yes.
Condition number five?
Number five will say, provide documentation of cross-access, comma, parking easements, cross-access easements, comma, parking easements, comma, and utility easements. Right now, it just says cross-access and parking easement. We're adding another easement on there. So you could do cross-access, comma, utility, comma, and parking easements would be a parallel sentence from the English professor over here. Just trying to make it grammatical.
Tell us when you're ready for the next condition.
Oh, okay. I would also like to include an additional condition, number eight, that states, in lieu of conditions six and seven, the applicant can follow city standards for a property association with one billing address and a liability waiver on the plat. And are we good there? And finally, I, my, my motion should include authorizing the chair to sign the findings of fact, so I didn't forget it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hewitt, a second by Frye. Is one of you please call vote?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
R2?
Yes.
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Yes.
And with that, I declare the planning zoning meeting closed.